It is at this time in our meeting that we're always glad to welcome visitors and receive public comment. We want to thank everybody for being here tonight. And we are glad that the Youth Advisory Council is here. We're glad that Gil is here. Larry, it's good to see you. Hope you're doing okay. Mr. Davis, it's good to have you. Mr. Moore, it's good to have you. And we're really glad that the staff is here. And Slater, it's good to see you too. We will open the floor now to receive public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to make public comments. Yes, Mr. Moore?
My name is Troy Moore. I help organize the petition in the case of getting off-permises sales of alcohol beverages on the ballot. Since this petition has been approved for election and ordered, I've had a number of citizens approach me and ask me questions about the proceeding, what or how it would work, and how the effect of alcohol sales would have on the city of Milschew, including the zoning changes. I would like the city council to consider zoning laws regarding when and where alcohol beverages could be sold. I think this matter affects all of Milschew, and it is important to all the citizens of Milschew. Thank you.
That's a good point. We appreciate you being here and making those comments. I think that's something that we as a council need to take into consideration, the possibility of the outcome of the election. And I think that that needs to be in our mind and start to contemplate what we should do as a council, if anything. You, anybody else have any questions for Mr. Moore, any comment? Thanks for coming. We, yes, we thank you for being here. We're going to take your comments under advisement, and we will discuss those here in a little bit.
Actually, probably not at this meeting, it's not on the agenda.
Okay. We can, alright, we will, yes, we will, like I say, thank you for being here. We want to tell you we appreciate those comments and bringing that to our attention.
I will say, Mayor, just as staff, we looked at the possibility that if this election does pass, what we need to do as staff will move forward. And one of the things that we looked at is an ordinance and attorneys that have to, that would establish some distances where businesses could be located and those kind of things. City of Milschew does not have zoning, so there won't be any adjustments into zoning. But the staff is preparing those things and looking at the future and what steps would need to be taken, so we'll be ready.
And I know that there's really nothing we can do until after the election. But I think that possibly the council could maybe take a look at maybe having a public hearing at some point in time to have public input.
So staff and attorneys are being prepared for whatever way the election goes.
Okay. That's good. Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment? Okay, thank y'all. We're going to go ahead and move into our agenda. First thing we would like to do is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of March the 9th of this year. I know that you've all reviewed those, and I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes.
A second.
We have a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we would like to do is to consider ordinance number 0477, day 0415. It approves the negotiated resolution between Atmos Energy and West Texas Cities Steering Committee. And as you all know, we've been a part of that steering committee. And David, you want to explain the results of those?
Yeah, this is a little different than a rate case that we see. And this, I'll go back a little bit in history, and somebody will remember when the legislature passed the gas infrastructure rate program.
Infrastructure, GRIP?
Yeah, GRIP. Gas Rate Infrastructure Program. And if you remember the first one that was filed, this was designed to give away, for a way that gas utilities could annually add to the rates, the cost of their infrastructure that they had incurred the year before. Well, the first one you remember had new pipes they installed, transmission, distribution, city gates, meters. It also had office buildings, big screen TVs.
Art.
Art. I think some sporting events for upper management. So GRIP didn't work out very well. Instead of going back and hashing that out with the legislatures, the steering committee for the West Texas Cities that were served by Atmos made a deal with Atmos to come up with what's called a rate review mechanism, which is what this is. Where we sat down and looked at those actual infrastructure costs and not all those extended costs. Atmos filed a rate increase in December 31st. I think they asked for $5 million, and with the steering committee's negotiation, it came down to $4.3 million. That rate actually went into effect March 15th, but it needs to be ratified by the council, and that's what this ordinance would be.
One second, Mayor. We have a motion to approve that ordinance? And a second. Is there any, is there any questions? Now, as a result of this rate increase or the negotiations, it'll be about a $2.50 per month charged with the customers' relationships in the future, or as of March 15th?
Yeah, it's already noted.
Okay, alright. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of this ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is to consider hotel motel tax fund request from the Milschew X Students Association. They may have submitted a request for funds in the amount of $2,600 for advertising and promotion for the five-year all-school reunion. And so does anybody have any questions about that request?
Is this in consideration for $2,600 up to the receipts?
This is up to $2,600 depending on the receipts that they turn in. And in our application, they didn't note that the last five-year reunion they had, they had 500 people that showed up. It really, I think, fits the criteria, the hotel motel tax, pretty well.
And with the last reunion, you couldn't find a motel room. This side of Clovis or barely one this side of Lobe. So it was a big crowd here, and it was really good. I'll make a motion that we accept the request.
Second.
A motion and a second to request, to approve the request, that $2,600 for authorized receipts. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next thing we would do, like to do is to consider the combining phase two and phase three of the airport runway improvement project. And David, I'm going to let you explain why you want to combine the project.
Sure. Combine back the runway and taxiway improvements at the airport. This would be, this project would be to completely mill all the asphalt out there and recompact the base and reseal the airport. Set this up originally in three phases over a three-year period. It's a $2 million project, total project. City's portion of that is $200,000. We pay 10%. First phase is engineering and design phase, and that's in progress right now. When I talked to the project manager for Techstock and with the engineers from Park Smith and Co., as we talked, it became pretty evident that there would be some substantial savings by combining the construct, both construction phases. Just the move-in and setup costs is, you know, that can be like $20,000 if we do it in two phases, and we've got that twice. Just the bid process for the quantities of asphalt that we have to have. So there'd be substantial savings to do that. Because this project is being funded with reserves that the city has, it's not dependent on funds that we bring in for the next two years. This, the construction for this project will probably be March or April of 2016. We're looking at another year. But I think because of the savings that we could see, it would be prudent to combine those phases and do that project all at one time.
How long is that going to take, this water shutting down the airport?
Probably, do you remember that in the moment? Three or four months, probably?
One hundred and twenty days.
Yeah.
Well, would this not maybe reduce the time that the airport is down?
Probably not, because they'll come in and do the runway, and then they'll do the taxiway. So the airport will actually be shut down just during the construction of the runway.
Oh, the taxiway part?
Make a move around probably on the taxiways.
Okay.
It may save some time.
I just assume that if you shut down, I mean, if you do the runway, of course you're going to shut it down. If you do the taxiways, then you're probably going to shut it down again, but...
Yeah, and that, the taxiways could probably be scheduled where you do one end, maybe they have to turn around and runway right back to the taxiway or something.
Okay.
But it, there could be some time savings, but mostly it's the money savings.
Right. You reckon the asphalt plant will still be set up there at that point in time?
I don't know if that'll get the bid.
Well, that's true.
Yeah. And, you know, oil is down now, so this may be a good time to do the project. Hopefully that affects the price of asphalt.
Okay. Alright. We have a motion and a second to combine those, the phase two and the phase three of the airport improvement project. Any discussion? Not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we would like to do is to consider approving order of cancellation for the special action for District Two. Now, since we only have one candidate that filed for that place on the ballot, then there's no need to have that one. So I'll make a motion that we approve that order of cancellation. Second. We have a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is to consider approving the order of appointment of election judges for the May 9th election. Me and I'm going to let you tell us who those are.
Deborah Noble has served as election judge for the city of elections for the last fifteen years, probably. Does a great job for us, and she has requested to work with Virginia Bowers, who has also worked numerous elections. Both of these ladies work counties, school, hospital, city elections, and do just a great job. So if it be the pleasure of the council, we'd ask that you appoint these ladies as election judge and alternate judge for this election. So moved?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve those two young ladies as election judges. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you, council.
We appreciate them.
Yeah, I remember so.
Next thing we'd like to do is to receive the investment summary and the financial statement for the quarter ending in March 31st of this year. I trust you've all reviewed that line by line, and I'll make a motion that we receive that investment summary. Second time. And we have a second. Any discussion? Any questions about the financial statement? Not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is to receive the March financial statement of this year.
Actually, Mayor, I think that there's an issue with two peoples in the agenda and one of us not proofreading.
Okay.
You actually just proved that financial statement.
We just did that. And the other one?
I had not.
We wanted to make sure that you got the March financial. It was important, so yes, that was just emphasis. All good.
Okay. It's not on your minutes that number eight was done.
It does.
Number seven?
It does.
Emphasis.
Okay. The next, next thing we would like to do is to receive a TML board report from Irene Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the board of directors meeting on March the 27th. Legislation is still in session at the Capitol, and it never ceases to amaze me, some of the things that try to sneak in. So I just want to encourage everyone to really, we have TML exchange that gives us some specific information about bills that are being passed. Those things, if ever you have an opportunity to testify, let me know. I'll put your name in the bin to be able to do that, because it does take our voices to be heard, to let these people that are making these major decisions know how we feel. And I can guarantee you, our TML president is very local about all of these things and very strong about keeping local control. Unfortunately, there are a lot of bills that are trying to pass that take away that local control, and that's been the biggest fight. And the biggest controversy is why that's, why that's being done. So it is important that our voices be heard. There are 50 days remaining out of the 140 of sessions, so there's still a lot of things that can take place. Just want to review some of the bills that have been introduced. Well, one, there's Senate Bill 343 that wants to turn, turn home rural cities into general law cities. And so again, that's just taking away control of it. We are not all the same. I think it goes back to a quote about having catchwork regulations. I, for one, don't want to be like everyone else. We have our own personality, and we know our citizens, and so it's important that we keep that. We thought the revenue cap bill had gone away. I had been asked to testify, and then he pulled it because of something else, and now it went back in again. There was testimony a few weeks ago on that, and so it's reared its head again. Again, it goes back to taking local control that we want to keep for ourselves. We did, there was a bill also that wants, the state wants to regulate all the city and oil and gas ordinances about whether they can do fracking, if the city can have any say-so with that. And the chair of that is the Honorable Drew Darby. He's the chair on the Committee on Energy Resources. He listened to hours and hours of testimony, and so it's nice to know that at least someone did listen and is trying to consider that. And so I, as the board director, a member of the board, I wrote a letter to Chairman Darby thanking him for at least listening and considering. I think that's real important, too, that we're not always just writing or emailing or calling about being negative, but that at least we're thanking them for listening and taking time to pay attention to the testimony that comes through. So I thought that was very, very important. Other bills, House Bill 1257, Senate Bill 711, and Senate Bill 1862, trying to give her a city can't lobby or can't hire someone to lobby for them. Of course, the Texas Municipal League is, what they do for us is help us keep our local control, and that the city can't pay dues. And so in some way, it's just almost trying to say, well, you're here, you're paying dues for TML, and they're lobbying, and they're doing this, and you can't do that. I don't appreciate someone saying that we can't, because, I mean, it's not like Milschew can go and hire lobbyists to go out there and help us with those things. And so TML does a lot for us, so that's something that we're trying to make sure that doesn't get too far. I don't think it will, but you never know. And so voices are, are important. And, let me see, House Bill 11 that would require city police departments to adopt the national incident-based reporting system by 2019, or else direct all grants to pay for the adoption. Gee Fries, do you have any extra information about that?
No, I do not. Some of them we already complied with, but we're still waiting for them to go for the rest of it.
So again, this is, and you know, we have thousands and thousands of bills, and I can tell you, you know, read every single one of them, and they point out the ones that are really important that could affect us. So I do appreciate all, all that they do. And again, our newspaper notice is coming up again, and there's a House Bill 1019 that would allow the use of newspapers' website for a modest fee. There's that argument of, no, you have to go to the paper or can you use the website? So that's come up again. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody have any question? No.
Thank you.
Alright. The, next thing we would like to do is to receive a report from the Milschew Youth Advisory Council, and I'm going to ask Larry Adams, council member, to present us with that report.
Yes, sir. I'm filling in for Kayla Preston today. The first thing that we wanted to talk about, there's really not much this week, but our Mother's Day fundraiser is coming up, and we're selling candy bouquets. Orders will be taken between April 27th and May 5th. They'll be handed out, order forms will be handed out at all the elementaries. And next month will be our last regular meeting for Youth Advisory Council, and we just wanted to give a thanks to Irene and the rest of the council for all the support and the support from the community. And I don't think there's anything else that we have on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next thing we'd like to do is to have the administrative reports.
Thanks, Mayor. We talked some of that utility rate cases. SPS has actually filed a rate case as they were mandated by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to refund $1.58 million to its customers in West Texas. That'll be in a one-time, one-month refund in July of this year. So it's nice that they're refunding $1.5 million while they're asking for $60 million in the rate increase.
It's nice of them.
They'll say that's their .32 if we send them our $14, something like that. However, it is, it will be a refund.
Just find that on your menu.
Council, remember that the Levitt Area Foundation did a survey of Milschew to get various information. They'll be out here on May the 7th, 5:30 PM at the Bay County Electric Co-op Building to discuss the results of that survey. And we've seen some of that, and I think y'all have a copy. It was interesting with what came back in, so I encourage you to make that meeting if you can. Also, on April the 21st, which is next Tuesday at 1:30, MEDC and Retail Coach will present some of the data that they gathered so far, as they're collecting information for the retail industry in Milschew. So if you can make that meeting, that'd be great, if you know somebody who's in retail or somebody in the community that just has an interest. I think it'd be a very informative meeting. The other thing I have is just a re-announcement, kind of, with, two weeks ago, the city launched its online credit card payment system. So we can now, citizens or customers can now pay the utility bill online. In about another 20 days, probably, they'll be able to pay their traffic tickets online.
Well, I can personally say it's wonderful.
Good.
I loved it.
Traffic ticket part?
No. No, sir, not the traffic part.
Anyway, we, that's...
It is wonderful.
We've been working toward that since we got the new webpage, and that is available. It's, it's working, I think it's working real well on our side. Hopefully, it's working real well.
Easy, and that's a little bit.
And that's all I've got, Mayor.
Council, have anything they'd like to add to? I, with the alcohol sales consideration, and I know Mayor Black and myself just kind of talked about it on the ordinance, on kind of preparing for that. I think maybe I would like to ask Mayor Black if he would call a, maybe a special meeting or hearing, maybe next Monday, to give the citizens of Milschew the opportunity to speak what they think.
Concerning the ordinance?
As far as the ordinance goes, and I know the county attorney's office has been researching some information on that, and, you know, we could invite the concerned citizens group as well, and it'd be a possibility. Slater, is it okay to do that in advance of the election, to have a...
I'm sure you can talk about it. You know, you wouldn't pass it until after. There's very little that a city can do, but there are certain things, and as we've seen these kind of pick-up steam across this part of the state over the past, I guess, three years, it's a pretty uniform ordinance that deals with location. Again, not, not much you can do, but there are some things. We have, we've done them for several cities, some which we regularly represent, some which we don't, so...
Actually, Slater probably doesn't know Brian's guy that sent me an ordinance that they have done for some of the cities.
Brian's never had a drink of alcohol in his life, so I think it's funny to make him work on the alcohol elections. So, yeah, Brian knows an awful lot about it, and he's, that's good to hear. If he's, he's sent you, y'all should have at your disposal kind of what you can do.
And also, we looked at, and I think the council got copies of the ordinance from several area cities, and essentially, they're all the same.
I think just to some people later in the community, it's a big concern, one way or the other. I would like to hear their voice.
Sure, I have no problem with that.
Could we schedule a meeting? Our public hearing? Did this invite the public to come and make comments?
Mayor Brock?
Fine. Next Monday? That work for a month?
Try to.
What's a good time? Six?
I wonder if that, at this time here, six thirty or seven?
Later? Senator? We have time to get that in the paper? Our official paper?
Is that possible, Larry?
Does it have to be a...
It'd just be a public hearing, just a notice in the paper, not a legal notice, just a public.
Should be a... Just a notice of...
Are you part of these?
Were we, were we asked the public to come and bring comments?
I'm sorry?
Were we just asked the public to come join in and provide comments about that?
Yes, whatever the council wants to do.
Okay. Next Monday at seven o'clock?
Okay.
Sounds good. The rest of the council have any opinion like that yet?
Motion.
Okay. I'd like to remind everybody about the National Day of Prayer, which is Thursday, May the 7th, and catered by River Smith. Starts, it's about 11:30 is when it starts. We should be through by 1:00 for those who need to get back to work. We'd like to invite everybody to be there. And we want to remind the public of the importance of the election on May the 9th. And lots of things going on that day. We have the mayoral election, we have the charter election, the school board has an election that day. So we'd like to just encourage my community to get out and... to get out and take advantage of that night. You want to yes? If not, we are adjourned.